I call to order this regular meeting of the Plain Township Board of Trustees for Tuesday, October 14, 2014. If everybody else stands for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before us, we have our agenda as presented. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections by fellow board members or department heads?
Oh, I'm sorry. Presentation of agenda is that where we're at?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to add under law director, 1900 foot.
Is there anything else?
Here, book mine.
The agenda will stand as amended. Let the record reflect that our fiscal officer is unable to be here tonight, severely ill. So in his absence, we're going to have our administrator, Miss Campbell, fill in his fiscal officer post. I'm in a mood that we have our fiscal officer post out.
One second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes. Okay, that's gonna open Sheriff's report. There's nothing noted, but do we have anybody in the crowd that wishes to address the sheriff's office with anything specifically related to township matters? Nothing. That'll close the sheriff's report. That will take us to our detectives' report, and then turn that over to Detective Koenig.
Thank you. Actually, I have updated copies, trustees.
Thank you. September monthly report. We had 876 calls for service. It was a slight decline by 1.3%. We had 85 crash reports, 11 crash with injury reports. We were down 15% in that regard. Might be due to the eight calls. We were down compared to last year. 112 alarms. Our traffic stops and citations were quite high. We had 237 traffic stops and 155 citations. Those numbers are included in the OBI checkpoint that we conducted on September 26. Between the two locations, we did one on Whipple Avenue Northwest and one on Middle Branch Avenue Northeast. I think 639 cars total came through the checkpoint. We got two OBI's out of that. Some driving under suspensions and possession of cocaine and possession of marijuana out of that. And those checkpoints were conducted with no additional cost to a township. So I think we did a pretty good job in that aspect. And then we had 47 arrests for the month, which was also down. I conducted 14 follow-up investigations with five closed cases for September as well.
Just to assist with other agencies who did that.
Those ended up being, one of them, we actually assisted the Department of Homeland Security on a search warrant on our residents. The other one ended up being a case that we thought was occurring in Plain Township. However, after looking into it, it actually began in Jackson Township and was occurring in Carroll County. So we just, obviously generated a photo report. We had closed it out because of that.
No questions? As far as, that'll close the detectives' report, and then take us to unfinished business. And then turn that over to our administrators, like the fiscal officer of the town, Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. Item number one is a resolution to amend Resolution Number 14-520 to read Human Training Associates Limited to perform surveying services at Schneider Park and to authorize payment from Fund 01M03B in an amount not to exceed $3,350.
I will so move on unfinished business number one.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item number two is a resolution also to amend a previous resolution, Number 14-518, to read as follows. Whereas Ohio revised code, Section 505.1A, provides that the Board of Trustees may sell or dispose of property at a private sale or recycling center if the Board determines that, one, the property is no longer needed, and, two, the value is less than $2,500. Whereas the township has accumulated scrap metal, which it no longer needs, and has a salvage value of $2,500, be resolved by the Plain Township trustees. It said scrap metal could be sold.
So move second. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And item number three is a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees to amend Resolution Number 14-235 to increase the amount from $17,500 to $18,700 for the purchase of additional equipment for the 2015 Ford Interceptor Cruisers from our various vendors.
I will so move discussion, just a point of clarification. Is this for, like, the Bluetooth?
Actually, that was all done. We received a credit, and they credited it to our 2014 vehicles. Should've went to our '15 vehicle. So then when we paid out, we were a little bit short. So they actually credited the wrong vehicles, the wrong POs that we had already had open. So it's really a wash, but out of this account, we have to pay a little more because we received a credit on this vehicle. However, they credited...
Another vehicle.
The other vehicles.
But this'll...
This includes everything. Bluetooth backup sensor, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And that ends unfinished business.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell. I'm gonna, should do it all. New business. I'll leave that to you.
Thank you. Item number one is a resolution for the false alarms.
I will so move second. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Item number two, and I have the resolution in front of me, is a resolution to enter into the attached agreement with the Stark County Regional Planning Commission to complete the storm water conveyance system inventory outside the urbanized area in the amount not to exceed $4,554.39 to be taken from Fund 01M03A.
So move second. Discussion. This is mandated.
It is, and it allows us to completely have our whole system, storm sewer system mapped.
Electronic.
All electronic, which will help...
When it comes to repairs and...
Any repairs. It'll really help Mr. Iacino's department, knowing where each pipe is, where everything is located within the township.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And the last item is informational, and we have some flyers over at the table where everybody signed in, that on October 21, which is next Tuesday, from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m., the Board of Trustees, Mr. Iacino, and myself, will be hosting an open house at the road department. It gives residents an opportunity to ask questions about the levy, to take a tour of the road department, to see the equipment that we have there, and a chance for the trustees, Joe and myself, to answer any questions about that levy. And again, that is the 21st, from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. It is online, all our social media, our webpage, and we do have copies over here. And that's the end of new business.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell. I'm gonna keep right with you for the fiscal officers' report.
Thank you. Fiscal Officer one is the pending warrants, be resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees to authorize payment of pending warrants in an amount of $668,432.50.
Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Item number two is for regular payroll, be hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize payment of regular payroll in an amount not to exceed $220,000.
So move authority paying. Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
All right. Fiscal Officer number three is a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees to authorize payment for the following medical claims as provided by Alt Care.
I will so move second. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal Office number four is the financial report. I do want to say at our last staff meeting, Stephanie Cochran and Luther Russert came to that meeting, and we did review financial reports from beginning to end with not only department heads, but with their secretaries and anybody else from departments that wanted to learn about how to properly read financial reports. Fiscal Office number five is be hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the following transfers.
So move second. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And then Fiscal Officer number six is the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
I will so move second. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
And Fiscal Officer number seven is a resolution to authorize a refund to the following persons for overpayments for emergency medical systems as required by Ohio Billings.
Also move second. Discussion, roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And that ends the fiscal officer's report.
So I promise this will be your last section of the agenda here, the actual administrator 's report.
All right. Item number one is a resolution to, from the Plain Township Board of Trustees, authorize payment to the Warsaw Brothers Landscaping for composting not to exceed $2,625.
I will so move second. Discussion, just a point of clarification. There are recycling fees for the west side of the township, for the sake of that point of the year. What's the difference, if any, between their recycling hours and ours, I believe, at this point?
I believe that we have...
Seven days.
Yeah, we're open seven days, including Sundays, 12 to 5. So we are open longer and have expanded hours compared to the subway.
Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
All right. Item number two is for the sale of scrap metal. It's a resolution that provides that the Board of Trustees may sell property at private sale if they determine that the property is no longer needed and the value of the property is less than $2,500. And whereas the township has accumulated scrap metal, which it no longer needs and which has a salvage value of less than $2,500, and these are sheriff cruisers listed below with their VIN numbers that we would like to salvage scrap metal.
I will so move second. Discussion. These are what are replacement cruisers that have been brought in.
Yes, and these are unsafe to sell on dub deals.
Do we actually research to see what the recycle value is of them, or is that something that's the sheriff's office?
The sheriff's office, yes. It's something that we don't have another option. They're not safe to sell.
Yeah. Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
I might have taken some things off the agenda tonight, I don't know. Administrator number three is a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to amend the Plain Township drug and alcohol policy attached here with...
I will so move second. Discussion.
Yes. Let me get to that section, and hopefully it's posted on yours. It's page eight. We discussed at our staff meetings that anytime an employee is involved in an accident or injury in the workplace that causes injury to himself, that that employer or employee can no longer defer the drug and alcohol test. In the past, it was, you had a supervisor, of course, who would say, okay, you know, I don't think there's a reason to have the test. But this is for the type of accident that sends somebody to the hospital anyways. Let's say somebody cuts themselves really bad, they have to go to the hospital. We really should be having drug and alcohol testing per the Bureau of Workers Comp and per our training. If it's a minor accident, nobody's hurt, you know, you stay at work, there's no reason for that. We automatically send people if they're in an accident which causes damage to any township vehicles, equipment, or damage or injury to another person. But this is those situations where we have people actually leave work to be treated, so they really do need to be, undergo drug and alcohol testing also.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And item number four is informational, letting the board know that I have applied for, and I'm sure we will receive, our Ohio EPA facility permit for the next five years. The old permit is expiring. They have redone the new EPA and PDES permit for the next five years, and I have made applications, so we will be absolutely fine in compliance.
So move...
Oh, there's no...
That's just notification.
Yeah, just notification. And that ends the administrator's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell. Changing it up. Fire Department Chief Snyder.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is the monthly report.
These numbers are relatively still applicable this whole...
Is in the past few months.
Yeah. Okay.
Item number two is just to let you know that the fire department's sponsoring the food drive, helping to make hungry in our community, and it's called Fire Truck Soap. It's with non-perishable items, food, and starts November 1st through the 16th of December. And items can be dropped off at township hall here.
We've got that promoted through the web and social media as well.
Yes.
Item number three is to also, just to let you know that we're sponsoring the firefighters' procure cancer, month of October, that breast, awareness cancer. So the local has chaired up with Susan Coleman and the Hayfield Tribal Foundations to do the program to sell shirts like I have on here for the month of October here to raise breast cancer, and then sell the shirts just to find if we have that at the house or so. Item number four is to authorize a payment prepared for our engine two, for All American, and not to exceed $5,000. This is a reference to a pump that's sealed, the pump itself is leaking. We need it taken care of before the cold weather starts. We talked to the service, attached at the service garage, the maintenance guys, and based on the hours, and they've never really had to do this before, and the equipment that's needed, and the cost of that, the first equipment to do the job properly and safely, we decided to park this out. And, you know, we put $5,000 in because they may get in there and have to do some other education with plumbing, but we're looking right now at about $3,3500. But we just put the $5,000 in in case there's any additional valves, plumbing is needed in place as we're doing that.
So move second. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Then item number five is with the letter received from the Stark County Health Department regarding the bullet cases that are going on throughout the country. I know we've been in contact with the local medical, the hospitals and the health departments, and then Stark County Health Department has issued this to Kirk Doris with this letter that you have probably regarding some information. And along with that, we talked about the signs of symptoms, the awareness of it, transmission of the virus itself. And at the end, this is, if any residents or anybody has any questions, make sure they feel free to call them and ask for their disease department, and they'll try to answer any questions they may have. I know that we've been working, again, with the local hospitals, have made contact with the Ohio Department, publicly stated, Dr. Cunningham was the medical director of Ohio, and response with them too. And so basically, the right has been, you know, they're going to be preparing some educational components to this, but just recognizing the detection of it, protecting of it, and the policy responding to that type of incident. So we're just now getting into this. I know we have talked to some of the guys, and we're planning to meet this week regarding this, and making sure we're prepared with the equipment, anything we need, what PPE staff wanted, we need to be as far as protecting our personnel in case of a type of incident that may require that. So I know it's heightened news right now, and it will probably continue for not a short period, but a long period of time, and recognizing the importance of us taking sure that our employees are protected, but also making sure that we're recognizing the signs and symptoms of that. So anyway, I will keep the board abreast of as far as anything else, additional information that we receive to enhance what we may do on the field.
Okay. Any questions, Chief?
That's all. Thank you.
Chief, Road Department, District IFCR.
Mr. Chairman, all I have to add is coming through the report from September. Any questions? I'd like to answer them. What do I have to...
We're not expecting...
I do believe we're under a question.
That was, that this year was going with traditional paving and not the micro-surfacing. I tried to pass it, ultimately became...
I don't have all the numbers finalized, but I will comment how much under we are. But I do know we are under...
You say the road wasn't real nice, especially the big ones, Dine and Schneider.
Took longer than expected.
Yeah. As you say, there's a lot of play going over, and while Kate is still cramping to get some streets done.
October, that's it. Is it down right in October?
It depends on the weather. I mean, I've seen them go to Thanksgiving. Depends on 50 degrees, that most people continue to do.
We're not gonna have any snow for a while, guys, so...
That's what I want to hear, Mr. Hawes.
For the sake of salt savings and... Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
I said it before, remember, it was the driest winter on record, so...
Let's keep it out.
I've taken his motion. Zoning Department, Mr. Falk.
Good evening, gentlemen. Zoning number one is the monthly report for September.
With Lexington Farms, Canterbury, or just Lexington Farms, I mean, how many more lots really are over there? Because I thought that was getting close to pretty full out. Does that remain...
Farms probably, I'm gonna guess, way out...
It's clear almost gone.
A dozen and a half.
Okay.
Under two, under two dozen. Canterbury Creek probably has...
It's less than a dozen.
I would think for around a quarter, probably a dozen or so. Still has a few.
Does Lexington have another, it's not phased yet, it's not platted yet?
No, nothing's platted there, no.
Because I know, I think we approved that area behind there, change the zoning for that over there for another phase at the rear.
Yeah, nothing, nothing to platter. I haven't talked with them in there, kind of kicking up the market for the remainder of the year. Hopefully we'll see something then the first part next year.
They just completed Phase Five, which is Bellevue Extension, all set.
Just to say it's gonna be interesting to see how that...
Six lots there.
How that possible plays out against the development of the Edgewood and that...
And then we just had a proposal for... We had a pine crest re-zoning last month, but that's about 40 lots above the mountain there.
Okay.
Okay, if you have no questions. And zoning number two, we have seven nuisance abatements this evening.
I will move on zoning 2A through G. Second, discussion.
Couple of those were revisiting our favorite starfire stations, what last month of the year, the Royal.
I know that starfire on North Market, I mean, it's looking, it's not diserbered enough. Good, but, I mean, it's looking very, very bad. I noticed it was like the anodism that's broken, the windows now starting to get boarded up. Is there anything we can do to that? Any avenues?
We haven't done any funding to date for commercial structures.
It's just a small little spot right there. I mean, that's like a cancer.
I keep looking, everything that comes through as far as what we may or may not be able to do regarding that.
Who's the property on our record on it?
I don't remember off the top of my head, sir.
It's something under the exterior, I think it's called Columbus. As far as demolition, it's... It's abandoned.
As a commercial structure.
Yeah, it's commercial. I thought it was in the language of...
I have to look at the crystal there.
It was for the sake of commercial.
It was for commercial, we have it vacant and abandoned because the residential was getting started. We'll just turn our wheels on that one, because that one we've gotta go. Get words that are more like it.
That might be something.
Yeah, well, sure.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And zoning number three, we have seven nuisance vehicles.
I will simply move on zoning three A through G. Second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And Mr. Falk, that's going to take us to our Parks Department, and then turn that over to Mr. Steiberg.
Thank you. Item number one for Parks is our monthly report.
As far as Supermarket during the month of September, well, pretty well, pretty well.
We. Double attendance each and every week from the week prior, and the food vendors were very pleased and were working out specific dates for May through September of next year, bring back for an entire season, or some additions as we go forward.
So good work on that.
Thank you. Item number two is just informational. For our three events, obviously, we just mentioned Supermarket, which was held every Monday in September outside of the Labor Day holiday. Barca Palooza was held as a rain date on 9/6. It was a very, very big success for year one. And Eat Waste was incredibly busy the week of 9/22. There were lots and lots and lots of different things that came through, truckloads upon truckloads upon truckloads. So it was very busy.
Around a couple of those.
Thank you for that.
I think I may have visited during my study.
I'll tell you what, it's a wonderful thing, because it's stuff you can't get rid of otherwise. I had computer monitors, those old school big screens. I mean, it's a piece of furniture, you know? So that was, it was great.
Our guys' backs were well aware. Thanks, though.
Thank you. Big screen was about 500 pounds.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So it worked out well. It was pretty successful. If there are no other questions, I'll move on. Item number three. And item number three is a resolution for Plank Township Board of Trustees, County Operate Repairs to Park Truck Number 63 by Montress Collision Center at a cost of $513317 from Fund 01B-06A.
I will some of. Second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
That concludes Parks.
Okay, thank you. Turn it over to our Law Director, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Hawes. With regard to 1900 Whipple, which we've been talking about some of the past few meetings, looking for some guidance from the board this evening. The update is that 50% of what we went in there on is done. The box truck has finally.
Oh, really?
Been removed.
Because the other day it was there.
It is gone. The other part of it is that trailer, as you know. Here's where I think we are in terms of options for you to choose from, if you will. The first option is just the imposition of the $100 a day fine. We've got that in court order. Certainly, that mounts very quickly. We can implement that and say that's what our remedy is going to be. Option number two is to go on the property, remove the structure itself. In order to do that, we're probably going to have to empty it. So we'll have to have a sheriff out there. We'll have to make sure that you've been out there before, maybe you could make another appearance. We're going to have to empty the contents out, and my concern is that contributes to what exists there at this time. The third option would be kind of a hybrid, which would be get a dumpster out there in the hopes of working with the property in order to have it filled with what it can be filled with and having the rest of the stuff transported somewhere else. That's kind of a hybrid type option that would require some cooperation, obviously, but if that's the route you wanted to go, we could certainly propose it. But as I see it at this point, those are our three options. So the box truck, as I said, is taken care of, so that's a good thing. What's left is that structure.
Who's on hook for the expense of all this? Is there anything that can go back on the tax?
Absolutely, yeah. If we do the self-help remedy, which is the option number two, as I described, is just to go on the property, empty the contents of a trailer somewhere on the property, and remove that offending structure, that's something we would absolutely put on the tax duplicate.
There's nothing that can be contested? That can be contested if we do this based upon the higher court.
We've got it. We absolutely are well within our discretion to exercise the self-help as described by the court. Now, as I interpret that order, that means removing the offending structure. So she doesn't specifically say that anywhere. That's how I'm interpreting it. I don't think I'm wrong. I don't think there's any question that that's what she must have been referring to when she says that we could go in and exercise self-help, so to speak.
What's cost effective means of doing this for all parties? Now, how do we flag it? Do we got to go to court each day?
No, it would, what I would suggest, if you're going to do the $100 a day fine, is to implement it. At this point, it's already up to, what are we in, say, the 14th? You're already at $1,400. It started October 1.
And how is it collecting?
You would have to potentially foreclose on it.
That being a property?
That being a property, because it's a wind that attaches to the lane.
I'd say go with the $100 a day, right?
And then we get it to a point where you're comfortable that kind of interest accruing. I have.
One way of meeting the property.
It absolutely is.
Especially with the unresolved.
Well, and I think that that, this is a matter of record, that property also has some taxation on it actually, as we know. So I think that there may be the opportunity to maybe have those things all brought to the forefront at the same time, if that's the direction the board wishes to go.
Tax, initiate the tax foreclosure.
Absolutely. Well, it depends what you want to let the interest get to. I mean, I suppose it refreshes on a daily basis, so it needs to be enough that it justifies or rationalizes a action like that. Also, to double check, foreclosures are a proper remedy, aside from a taxing. Once we have a taxing, obviously, that's the only way to enforce it, so my guess is that it is. But I haven't looked at that specifically with regard to a zoning violation before. I don't think we've ever foreclosed on, have we?
We can initiate the tax foreclosure on any delinquent taxes that exist.
Okay. And if that applies in the zoning context, then absolutely.
Well, no, outside of the zoning context.
Right, yeah, I know we've done it outside of zoning before. I just wasn't clear if we've ever done it with regard to zoning. I will say, there's also been some movement, and I don't know where that's going to go. So that's why I bring these, some discussion with the property owner. So that's why I bring you these options outside of that. Certainly, the best case scenario is it's sold tomorrow. I'm not sure that's going to happen. So that's why I bring you those options. I don't know what you want to.
Especially the later to. I feel as if they're, they're possibly a quicker response, but I still think it's going to refester itself in a bit different form, knowing the longevity and the detail that we do. Whereas if we go at it $100 a day, allow that to compound, and then we can force the issue of very serious action in foreclosure where.
We have that plus, I think we've accessed the existing current, that we're going to ask the county auditor and initiate the process by now.
Either way, and then we'd have to either join in that action, or they could join in ours.
I would like to see exactly what the delinquency existed delinquency are, maybe initiate that process for the auditor, and then we can attach ours to theirs. Would be my recommendation. That would expedite.
Total A. That's my rip. I just didn't mind.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I mean, I'll agree with these two, but I'd leave until it's number two. Get it, get it out. But the problem is, now, to remove the trailer, we have to remove the contents, so I'm leaving on the property. It's only going to compound the situation that exists.
And I will say that Danny and I are working on what I'll call potential helpful solutions to that problem as well, that I'll be able to report more about, hopefully, in the very near future. I just want to make sure we've got all of our cheese cross in our eyes done.
I see your guys' way, and I'm okay.
Well, and quite frankly, should you decide, even by next meeting, you want to do it the other way, nothing's stopping you from doing that either. So you should, you know, have a team to guard it with. But in the interim, certainly, that clock will be ticking from October 1. Okay?
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, Eric. That'll take us to Communications, and to save Mrs. Campbell, since she's already had so much here. I'll just go down through these. First is a thank you for the Road Department. Donna Schonberg says, Dear trustee members, I am writing this brief note because I want to commend Joe Iasino and his coworkers for the job they did at the roundabout heading into Whitewood. They were not only extremely competent in executing their work, but were also very polite and friendly. You must receive compliments at times, but I just wanted to, or complaints at times, but I wanted to let you know that I am.
I am Whitewood condos owners.
Appreciate their efforts to improve the area. Sincerely, Donna Schonberg.
Mr. President, can I add that I want to thank Dave Robertson and Connor Camore, I believe. I'll put that clean in that.
The next communication is from Ron Vance at Altman. This is regards to the Fire Department. Address hello, STEMI caregivers. Congratulations on a great process and outcome for this spry 70-year-old man rescued by Plank Township VMS. Pre-hospital ECG was performed within six minutes of VMS arrival and immediately transmitted to Altman ED, who activated the STEMI alert within two minutes. CATH team all arrived within 28 minutes and officially performed percutaneous coronary intervention PCI to complete the preserve this heart life, this heart muscle function. Great teamwork. He said that people in his family live into their 90s and hundreds, so he's on his way, thanks to your combined efforts. Thanks for your dedication to the quality STEMI care. Good day. Chief, has this already been shared with our?
Yes, I have talked to Brandon Mackel and Brandon Alden, the two firefighter colleagues who were there, assisted this care and treatment to the area loyal to the hospital. And the next slide here just shows you the ballooning of this heart muscle, and the effects of that, we're bringing the heart muscle back, the coronary muscle back up to the valve, and getting a full functional blood flow to the muscle. So, you know, thanks to obviously the citizens, the board, the guys using the equipment, you know, we can't do this without our team effort in this community and to provide this type of service. You know, I can tell you, historically, you know, 10, 15 years ago, you know, just like this gentleman here, most of these people have a low survival rate. You know, they many times don't come out of hospital, or don't even make it to the hospital because of the lack of blood flow to the heart muscles. So, you know, with the technology that's out there, the equipment that we've been able to provide, you know, back to the community, we're able to do this type of things, and working with, you know, all the hospitals in the county here, sending those STEMI's, those ECGs directly to the hospitals to get that activation of their cath lab, and that's the end result.
Well, good work by the guys. And the other communication we have is a thank you for the Fire Department from Mary Uter. It says, For Plank Township Fire and Rescue enclosed, find a donor who truly does not thank you enough for all the 911 calls you have made to the above address. We are fortunate to have such competent, well-trained and compassionate volunteers as paramedics. In the recent loss of my husband, I realize again to be able to call upon you at a time of emergency is a comfort. Sincerely, Mary Uter. Thank you, Chief, for your guys' efforts. That actually concludes communications. It is going to take us to public speaks. If you wish to address the Board of Trustees, we ask that you state your name and your address. For the record, official officer, Pro Tem, Miss Campbell, and you're limited to three minutes. Is there anybody that wishes to address the board?
Yes, my name is Elizabeth Behrish, and I live on 2525 Kingswood Street, right here at Plank Township, and I'm interested in raising a few chickens. I was informed that the township doesn't allow it, but yet I heard that within a city limits of North Canton, you would be able to raise a few chickens. So how do I go about changing so we can have it in our own township?
It would require.
It's going to require some zoning rights on the.
Change. And it is permitted in some areas in residential neighborhoods. In North Canton, it is, they do have a code that qualifies number of chickens, no roosters, how distance from property lines, that type of thing, generally for home consumption of eggs. Would have to be limited to something like that. There are other instances of in what would be considered small, non-acre
In the past, we backed, mostly they're backed, even backed by the Road Department due to issues, though.
I think we did run into issues, and that's where we came in with ours that doesn't permit it. Are you in a residential neighborhood, or what's your?
It's right over here, just a couple of streets down. And the, our lot size is a little bit less than half an acre. So they would be confined in the pan. It's not like, you know, if we would let them out, we would be out there watching, and it wouldn't be more than six maybe, just for our own use for eggs.
It would require a change to our zoning tax, if that's what the law will change. We're supposed to.
I understand roosters are noisy neighbors wouldn't like that, so we're okay with that too.
Roosters are from North Canton.
I guess, Ben, what you can do, if you're interested, you can always apply to the zoning commission with a format, for example, an example resolution, that type of thing, and ask the zoning commission to review that. That would be the steps that would be taken in order to make a change in the actual zoning resolution.
Where would I go to?
Oh, if you want to give me your contact information, I can get in touch with you, and then you can make your application to the zoning commission for a hearing. So let's all check the dates, but you're probably looking at it. Wouldn't be able to be on the zoning commission until December. And then, just so you're aware, it takes about a three-month process for zoning resolutions to go through. I'd be happy to work with you more, you know, and that's, that's your right as a citizen of the township to make a resolution change, make a recommendation to the commission, and then, you know, present your case, and then the commission would review that. The commission would then make a recommendation to the township trustees, and they would be the final vote on whether or not that may be permissible.
Okay, so then I could talk to you after the meeting?
Yes, you know, give me your information after the meeting, and we'll get in touch and start with you. If you wish.
Danny, outside of you, you'll follow to see what.
We'll follow through on that.
Let's request from North Canton, what their language is that they have.
I think I've got it.
Over there.
Because I think they allow to.
I was going to say, it's on a nuisance-based restrictions.
I know more and more people are starting to do that because of the economy.
To their own ends.
Mr. Falk will follow. May I have Mr. Falk will follow with you? Is there anybody else that wishes to address the Board of Trustees? Three minutes? We were 1900 Whipple, one of us came on the house. I listened to everything you said about 1900 Whipple and I agree with you, that's well enough to secure you up and use that. The problem that we have is, if you look at the paperwork in front of you, Eunice Carpenter, who is the actual property deed holder for the 1900 B, attempted to speak with the owner of unit A and said, what would it take to clean up the mess, basically? And this is what she gave us. So, if, the value of all the stuff there, she's estimating it to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $230,000. But if you look at it two different places, it says $25,000 will make it leave the blacktop. It's extortion, pure and simple. Exactly what it is. However, this week alone, the price has gone from $25,000 to $3,000 to make it leave there. So I just want you to be aware that there's little side yields going on, but we're, basically we're being extorted in order to be able to clean up this property, which is not fair to anyone. And as far as real estate taxes go, KeyBank paid the taxes recently on that property, so I don't know if it was any at this point.
According to the auditors website, the staff are doing that, it's not the case, sir.
If you can look at Star CJIS.
I look on the Stark County auditor's site to see...
The auditors have reconciled every, it says on there that they paid the taxes about that.
Not in the auditors' website, except...
Is there owed money owed?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. I looked at CJIS, but I just sort of, I'm interested to know where... I know what you said you're going to do about possibly putting stuff in the parking lot or possibly putting it in a container. I don't know what the best option is. I just know that, I don't think it's right to extort money from us to clean up the property. I'm not saying that Mrs. Carpenter isn't willing to do something because she has interest in doing that, to clean it up and make our property value stay up, you know?
Correct, maybe we're all, but I mean, that's, that's matter, quite frankly, we don't have any jurisdiction or control. I mean, that would have to be something...
That's between them.
And it would be, if anybody's gonna interject, I mean, where the sheriff's office even have...
It's a civil dispute, Eric. We don't really, with private property. With the case in your hands as far as clean up and things like that in the court order you have, is it trying to extort money to install?
Our court order, these aren't even remotely close to being tied together.
Two property owners trying to negotiate a settlement.
That's right.
I guess my thought was if there was some value attributed to all this stuff that's sitting there, you know, if the value was $230,000, which is what this neighbor says, and now we're down to, if you give me $3,000, I'll get rid of it.
Well, that's subjective without an actual appraisal, so that's, I mean, I don't think there's anything here as far as what we have a court order to enforce.
Right.
And what she's trying to negotiate with you, that's two benefits. That would be another civil issue.
Let's, let's just use the example, just real quick, I'm sorry. If somebody was paid to her to get rid of that stuff off that property, let's just stop doing it again.
Well, I think that if you were gonna do that, you'd enter into some kind of agreement to, and you put that in the agreement, I would think.
But I mean, is, are we still moving forward with an ordinance or something to possibly deter it later?
Danny and I are working on his own.
And so, so maybe?
Yes.
On that maybe?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I just want to know where we stand and Mrs. Carpenter, we'd really like to know where we stand on this.
Sure.
All right.
The immediate, it's the $100 a day fine to where we can then push it further.
Push it towards a forfeiture, maybe join in with the county on what may still be owed on the property taxes already.
So within, within something? I'm just asking for a thought.
Tomorrow will be $1,500. I'm not sure what's...
In our reality is, what about, I mean, it's gonna have to be a greater balance in what we have legal costs to pursue.
Right.
Judge.
Well, the other issue is going to be the length of time or to get the proposed action.
That's, and that's a whole nother, that's a whole...
That's why I keep saying, the property owner takes care of it themselves.
I can tell you that I hope that moves in that direction. Aside from that, we're gonna do what you've heard us say up here today with the board deciding. And as far as that goes, as far as the timeline goes, there's just, there's too much right now for me, I guess. You've seen what we've had to do previous to this.
I'm just thinking it goes to year end, but then we're talking about $90,000 in fines. No, I'm sorry, $9,000. $9,000 in fines.
Yeah, so, that's where we are.
All right. Is there anybody else in the crowd that wishes to address, yes, Dan, just state your name and your address for the record, please?
Okay, I'm Yvonne Carter from 1900 Whipple. And the first thing I want to do is tell the board of trustees and the taxpayers of Plain Township and Council Williams that I am sincerely sorry for the, for what I have caused Plain Township to go through and what I have put you through. That was never, ever my intention. That was never my intention and neither were the multiple surgeries that I had to go through that started the delay of all of this. Bill Weaver doesn't have anything to do with that party center right now and he's, has done everything possible to harass me in filing just frivolous nuisance reports that there were never any construction materials brought to that property. The asphalt pile was 100% hidden from anybody's view and I worked my butt off day and night to move it. What your parks department did was basically remove my hill and I know that it must look like I have not done anything to remedy this situation, but I have done nothing else but to work nonstop. That container is full from top to bottom. I haven't even opened it since, while I was having a surgery, the contents of a home were in there. And then also, Mr. Weaver has filed complaints with the Stark County Board of Health for 1900 Whipple and for my home in Jackson Township. I started my business in 1990 in Plain Township and have been proud to be in Plain Township. Never, ever was in default or owed a penny to anyone until my building started filling up with raw sewage from Bill Weaver's building for his illegal cooking and for the carpenters illegally plumbing their soil stack or their sewage line into my soil stack. I never approached Eunice Carpenter. She approached me and asked me, and that, that wasn't $25,000 to make it, to make it disappear, it was $25,000 to deliver a semi-trailer from People's Carriage and have it loaded and have it moved away, not thrown away. The reason that it ended up on the blacktop is because Bill Weaver contacted the fire marshal and I had to comply emptying the building out, which meant everything had to go on the blacktop. Bill Weaver stands up there and says that I've hurt his business. In fact, he committed perjury at the Plain Township hearing when he volunteered to testify against me because he said how much I've hurt his business. But in his own email to Patty Carpenter, Eunice Carpenter, to myself, he said the reason that he didn't pay on a trailer was because he only had nine weddings last year when I didn't have a single thing on that blacktop. So, I don't know, I'm just, I'm really sorry and I want you to know that I'm doing everything I can. The $3,000 is the remainder that Eunice Carpenter contacted me against today, is, the $3,000 is the remainder of what I owe on the Mayflower moving truck. I don't know what else to say.
Yvonne, what does that mean, it's the remainder on the Mayflower moving truck? What is, what will happen if you, if you paid us $3,000, what's gonna happen?
He will, I sent you the agreement. I emailed it to you after we spoke. They will bring the Mayflower moving trailer from West Virginia and spot it anywhere in Stark County and then I will have to load it myself and then it will be...
How is, how is that possible?
How is what possible?
How is you loading it yourself possible?
Well, how did all the stuff get out on the blacktop?
Well...
By me.
Right, but I mean, in any kind of a, and, and, I'm not being funny, I just, I...
It has a Maxim lift gate on it.
Okay, so it would bring stuff up?
Yes. Once the batteries are replaced, he doesn't know if the batteries work.
What's the, what's the timeline for that to take place?
As soon as the $3,000 is paid, he's, in the agreement, it said that it would, I think, but I'm not positive because I don't have it in front of me. And it's been a while because of my vertigo, I can't read on the computer, but it's, I think it said within 10 days. The problem with moving the container has been, and I just found out, I'm able to have it in, on residential property. I can move it to my home and all I have to do is get a zoning permit and move it and it...
Is that in Jackson?
Yes, and at one, and at one time, about four or five months ago, Jim Geiser from, he's out in Dalton, something, maybe it's Geiser Trucking. He, because, I was on a waiting list and he called me at 8:00 in the morning and said he had a cancellation and he would be there to move it. And I waited until 10 o'clock at night and he never came. And he said that, something about that I didn't call him back. Well, I didn't even have a phone at that time because I simply don't have any money anymore with what's happened. And I replied with an email to him telling him, yes, I will be there waiting for him and he didn't come and so, then, and now, the problem has been that I have not had the money to move it to my home, but I don't want to lose it.
So, as we sit here now, is the $3,000 plan in place?
That was with Eunice Carpenter today and I tried to contact my attorney multiple times today and People's Carriage to clarify it because there's a new kink in it this afternoon and the subilla of People's Carriage says that the amount I owe is $7,500, but the court order says it's $3,000.
So you're not, not exactly clear where that stands? Is that fair?
Well, it should be, it, it started out as $7,500, but it should be $3,000.
Is it necessary to move that? It's gonna be, it's gonna be a 18.
Oh, yeah.
There was only, there was only one place that was able to move it and that was Rockies in Malvern and he's too busy delivering them to everywhere, including like 20 of them to Walmart.
I know they can't, yeah.
Have you talked to any towing companies about moving it?
Yes, I talked to all of them, including Reed's. This was years ago, but Geiser Trucking, he said he could move it and he has moved things for me before, but then I haven't been that in touch with them.
Have you been in contact with any, they had to do any truck, towing companies lately? Like the Santas or Canton Towing or, because they have equipment they could load that truck on, that trailer on?
Not lately, but when I, I never even heard of a container until Nick Campenoway told me that that was what, because I had been shopping for mobile homes, which is what Steve, the one before that, Baro, said that I had to have as a necessary building because nothing about my property meets any setback guidelines. But I had never even heard of a container, so when he pointed it out to me in the ad that I was showing him about the school, mobile homes, I called all of them at that time. So I, to answer your question, no, not lately, I have not. Other than I know Geiser Trucking can move it if it's not, but I don't know who moves mobile homes because they're all over the place now with these new hotels and they're the same size.
So do you, do you have a plan as of, as of this point then?
I've had a plan, but I've been so paralyzed, like I didn't know, I mean, I was told I couldn't sell anything on the blacktop, so I didn't have a sale, I spent that time. I, because of, I have, I haven't even taken any care of my healthcare issues at all. All I can do is focus on one thing at a time and the major thing, because I felt like putting our firefighters in harm's way was more important. That was what I concentrated on. So, I can only focus, I just got the, the truck moved 10 days ago and now I've been trying to focus on...
Do you, do you have an understanding as to where things stand right now?
I called Eunice Carpenter and told her that, that I had to find out about the exact details of People's Carriage.
Why don't you stick around and you and I can have a talk for just a couple minutes after we wrap up here, is that okay?
Yes.
Is there anybody else as part of public speaks that wishes to address the board of trustees? That'll close public speaks, I meant take concerns of trustees, is there anything either by fellow trustees as for the record? Concerns of the fiscal officer Prozam today?
Not this evening, thank you.
That'll take us to approval in the minutes for September 23rd, 2014, which I will so move.
I'll second those.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes. There is need for executive session, so, being hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to adjourn the executive session at 7:10 PM from this regular meeting is authorized on our Ohio Department 121.22G for the purpose in consideration of 1A, appointment of a public employer official, 1F, compensation of a public employer official.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.